Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting January 21st, 2025. It's six o'clock. Ms. Garcia, roll call, please.
Mayor Eaton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Councilmember Bucelato.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Member Vessina.
Here.
Councilmember Bedford.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. At this time, item number three, we're going to need a motion to adjourn into Community Facilities, District Number One.
I make a motion to adjourn to Facilities District Number One.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Thank you very much. Item 3A, Presentation on Fiscal Year 24 Annual Finance Report Presentation and Motion to Accept the Report. Mr. Dudding.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we are joined by Mr. Ben Herr and Ms. Gavin Jeradine from Fester and Chapman. They will be presenting the annual audit ending June 30th, 2024. I'm pleased to announce we had a clean audit. We had no findings. There are five items on the agenda tonight. CFD One, which we're in. CFD Two, the town audit. And then, on consent, we have the single audit regarding grants and the expenditure limitation. Mr. Herr will address these as they appear in the order of the agenda. And with that, I will bring up Mr. Herr.
Good evening, sir.
Good evenings, Mayor, Vice Mayors, Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to present Meadowlands Community Facility District Number One, financial audit highlights for the year ended June 30th of 2024. Before I start the prepared presentations for the audit results, I would like to extend our appreciation to the management and then council members of the towns for your support and the understanding of the audit process. So basically, overview of the presentation is made up of audit results summaries. We have performed the financial statements audit for the CFD Number One, and then we issued financial statements audit reports along with the report to the Board of Directors. The first summary is about the financial statements audit. As mentioned before, we issued a modified opinion on the financial statements of the CFD Number One, which is the highest opinion, cleanest opinion you can get from this kind of the audit. And it means the statements are presented fairly on all material aspects according with the gap. We do not have reported any deficiencies, either mature weaknesses or significant deficiencies on the internal controls over the financial reporting. Second report is, as I mentioned, this is a required communication for the auditors to the governors. It basically described all the things that happens during the audit process. One of the main issues included in this report is if there was any difficulties for the auditors in dealing with the management, and then if there was any disagreements with the management, we can happily point back to you. There is none of that had happened. So this is the end of the presentation for the CFD Number One. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Commissioners? This is our first one, so I'm assuming this is a really good thing, what you just said. So, we, it's not our first one, so we appreciate that very much. So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll go into item 3B, approval. Let's see. Oh, motion, I need a motion to accept. Okay. At that point, at this time, I entertain a motion to accept the report as given.
I make a motion to accept presentation of fiscal year 24 Annual Financial Report Presentation and a motion to accept that report.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
By the Vice Mayor. Okay. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Passed. Item 3B, approval of October 7th, 2024 Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, special meeting minutes. Ms. Garcia.
The minutes have been included, and we are prepared to file them.
All right, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for CFD One.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, or any questions? Okay, all in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, very good. Let me pass. At this time, we will adjourn from Community Facilities District Number One, and we will need a motion to...
That takes a motion, sir, to adjourn.
That takes a motion, okay. Adjournment. So I need a motion to adjourn, please, from CFD One.
I make a motion to adjourn from CFD One.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, very good. Now, at this time, we will, I need a motion to adjourn into CFD Number Two.
I make a motion that we adjourn into Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, very good. We are in CFD Number Two. Item 5A, Presentation on the Fiscal Year 24 Annual Financial Report and with a motion to accept the report. Mr. Herr, again.
Thank you again. So this is for the Meadowlands Community Facility District Number Two, for the audit performs for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2024. We issued similar reports to the CFD Number One, and then first report is financial statements audit reports along with the report to the Board of Directors. Basically, we also issued a modified opinion on financial statements of the CFD Number Two, which means all statements are presented fairly in all material aspects in accordance with the gap, and that we do not have any deficiencies reported in here, too. Again, we have included our communications to the Board of Directors in the report to the Board of Directors. We do not have any difficulties encounters in performance of our audit. We do not have any disagreement with the management, so it was clean audit for the CFD Number Two. This is the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Herr? Not seeing any. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So with that, I will entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year 24 Annual Financial Report for CFD Two.
I make a motion that we accept the fiscal report for CFD Number Two.
Second.
All right. Heard a motion and a second. All right, very good. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes. Thank you so much. Item 5B, approval of the minutes, October 7th, 2024 Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, special meeting minutes.
You have the minutes in your packet for your consideration.
We have the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Can I have a motion for approval, please?
I make a motion, we approve October 7th, 2024 Merrill Ranch Facilities District Number Two Special Meeting Minutes.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have, we have a second? Okay, Bishop Bedford. We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? All approved, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, very good. That passed. Very good. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from Community Facilities District Number Two.
I make a motion, we adjourn from CFD Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. All right, at this time, we will move back into our regular meeting of January 21st. At this time, please join me in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thank you so much. At this time, item number nine, our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So at this time, we do have one in-house call to the public here. Mr. Felker.
I think I got prior approval for a few seconds over three minutes. Did I?
We'll see.
We'll see. I get cut off?
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Town Councilmembers. My name is Paul Felker, and I am the Executive Director at the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm a little taller than the microphone here. I've been in this position for a little over two months now, and I wanted to do a quick informal update, is it okay? Okay. On the state of the chamber and all that is involved with the chamber, and I will provide a more detailed informal update at a future date. My first topic is what the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce fully entails. I created a small flyer not too long ago that gives a quick synopsis of chamber duties, visions, and a thank you message to all of our current chamber members. So I have some of these. It's a nice little flyer that discusses some things. I'm gonna put some in the back, if anyone wants some, they're free to take tonight. So, along with our normal chamber duties and goals, we also manage the McFarland State Historical Park, the State Park Gift Shop, and the Visitor and Tourism Center. Over the course of the last quarter, the State Park had over 3,000 visitors. Our gift shop has over 75 local vendors selling products from art to jewelry, soap, honey, and many other things. We have two full-time employees, including me, and two part-time employees. We will be losing one of our part-time employees within the next two weeks, unfortunately. One of the parts of our contract with the State Park Association is promoting events. One of our events is called Ernest Talks. Of course, Ernest is Ernest McFarlane, the namesake of the park. We team with AZ Humanities to provide a one-hour presentation each month on various topics. Last week, Christine Reed gave a presentation on the history and the mystery of the Hela River. We had over 50 attendees. It was standing room only. These are free to the public and are very informative and very interesting. As for tabled topics, I wanted to update on current and upcoming events and chamber news. Of course, we participate in the upcoming Historic Home Tour on February 8th. We have a Florence Farmers Market twice a month. With once a month, we incorporate a themed Padilla Park Day. On February 22nd, we have the Eighth Annual Memories on Main Car and Bike Show. This is our Super Bowl for the year. So far, we have well over 200 entries, so things are going well. While I'm on the car show topic, I wanted to bring up some great sponsorship opportunities. With over 400 entries, we award over 100 sponsor plaques. These are a great opportunity for local businesses and individuals to sponsor an award prize. So for instance, the $30 is a plaque sponsor. You get your name on a five-by-seven plaque. Your name is displayed on the sponsor's award banner at the main booth event, and you are promoted all day long by Headline Entertainment. For $60, it's the Friends of the Sponsor plaque sponsor. Your name is also on a five-by-seven plaque, your name on the back of the event T-shirt, and the name on the sponsor banner at event. Plus, you will be promoted all day long by Headline Entertainment. So for that price, you get on the plaque, on the banner, on the shirt, and promote it all day. It's a very good investment, plus you are supporting the town, the event, and the chamber. I also brought some sponsor flyers in case anyone would like to peruse them later. So other events coming up. The First Thursday Mixer at the Alex Lodge on February 6th. We do a monthly First Thursday Mixer every month. We started a monthly morning coffee mixers. We are doing some ribbon cuttings. We have a new lunch mob, which will help promote local restaurants. We do the Quarter of the Women in Business Dinner. The next one is March 12th at the Green Tree Inn and Suites. We are preparing to organize a State of the Town event soon. I...
It, it, it did shut off. We...
You can come back at the next meeting.
Okay, am I done?
Yeah.
That's it?
The next call to the public, yeah. So in the future, Ms. Garcia, can we put, since they are a partner of the town, can we just put them as a, as a presentation?
Most definitely, sir. We offered that.
So we'll, we'll create your own thing, Paul. So we'll, yeah. So we'll just come back with a presentation, so that way you can do, but if you...
And we have a lot of events coming up, and things are looking good. Thank you to the Town of Florence, and it's an honor to, to serve the community of Florence. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Paul. All right, I have a second in-house, Ms. Jennifer Ruby. Good evening.
Good evening, Council, Jennifer Ruby. I want to make it real clear, these comments have nothing to do with my professional capacity or the item that I have later on the agenda. I have the honor of serving on the Central Arizona College Foundation Board, and I wanted to make council and the public who are participating, oh, sorry, take a breath, aware of our big annual fundraiser that's coming up. It's called the Night of Stars. It's February 21st. We would love for anyone from the Town of Florence to participate. It's the large fundraising opportunity for the foundation to raise funds for scholarships to support the college. We do a silent auction, there's entertainment. Again, it's February 21st, it's at auction over in Maricopa. You can just Google Central Arizona College Night of Stars for tickets. And I've been really fortunate to hit up some of the businesses in Florence to make contributions, which has been wonderful to participate. So that was it. I just wanted to take a minute to make you aware. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have one other in the crowd. Sir, would you like to approach? And then we've got a couple online.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Les Buckner. I am resident of Florence, and I wanted to bring your attention to one of the agenda items on the, on the, for tonight, 13H, having to do with the block wall project. I, I apologize. I tried to send an email that was apparently blocked because the service provider we use for our email domain was not getting through. So I just wanted to mention to you, I know, I think Keith gave, each of you gave a, a copy of an email that I wrote, but I, the reason I, the reason I did that is that as I went through and I read that agenda item, I went back and I looked at the, that what was approved back in April of 2024, and it just looked a little bit odd. And it looked odd because that project essentially is complete from all visual standpoints, and it seems odd that we would be coming back to get an approval for something that's already done, for approval in excess of what was already approved. And there are also a few other items in terms of explaining why the cost increase that just didn't make sense to me. And so I put that all in my email, and I'm, I won't go into a lot more detail, but I wanted council to be aware of it, if you weren't already. This is something that I would think that council is gonna wanna have a few questions to, to have town answer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as information, I did hand out the copies to all the council members of your email, and we have already alerted our IT department about that, that situation. So hopefully that'll, we'll clear that up. Thank you, thank you very much. So at this time, we have two online. I'll go top to bottom, Ms. Sheri Har. Good evening, Ms. Har.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Sheri Har. I'm born and raised in Florence, Arizona. Very proud of that. Shout out to Ms. Garcia and Ian from IT. Just want to say thank you for the quick response and sending me the link to the work session. Just want to say I appreciate it. Also see that the link is now where the agenda and the agenda items are on the packets. There's also a link on there to, to review the videos, so that I think that's great to help out community members, a quick, you know, link to find something. What I want to speak on tonight is on the work session, I watched the three hours that you guys were all, you know, working together in unison, and I did see that there was a vote. I think Ms. Garcia indicated it was five to two in, in the Zoom calls and having the call to the public. When I watched it, I thought it was more a three and three with the mayor on the fence and keeping call to the public for people who are on Zoom. I'm hoping that the three that have voted or want to do away with call to the public on Zoom rethink it. For example, tonight, I'm homesick. There's no way that I could go into the council in person without infecting everybody else, and I don't think any of us want that. My mother, who also attends these meetings with me sometimes, she's elderly, she's not able to drive at nighttime. You have single parents, I know that Councilman Neal indicated you have single parents out there, that sometimes, you know, you don't have a caretaker to watch your children. I know that Councilman Bucelato, Councilman Bedford also indicated, you know, why are we changing this up? Why do we need to do this? If you, council, want to hear your constituents, then I think this is a perfect avenue to hear, to hear us. Why take this away? If you have an individual who's maybe being unprofessional on the call, mute them, and then talk to that person on a case-by-case basis. Again, I hope you rethink this and keep Zoom open to the public where we're able to not only watch, but we can speak as well. And I would hope that you keep the two calls to the public, but if you only keep it to one, please do it in the beginning. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Har, and I will make one comment. We also are all in acceptance of your email. We did all receive your email as well. So Ms. Jo Reese, you're next.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I will also be speaking on behalf of Zoom and what has been officially discussed, not, excuse me, what has been unofficially discussed. Mayor Eaton, as you well know, I did send a email as well indicating the reasons why we should and need to keep Zoom for our community members. It's my understanding, over the course of a couple of years, that previous council members were with the thought that we would like to increase community participation and bridge the gap that is between council members and, and town members. So help me make this make some sense. If we do cut off Zoom, how, how is this going to help us? I too, like Ms. Har, I am under the weather this evening. I had planned on attending in person, but not able to do that for the same reasons she mentioned. I don't think I want to spread what I have amongst the crowd there. But in any event, I want to encourage all of you on the council to give community members what we need, not what some council members believe and think, you know, is best for us and what they want to see. We have to keep in mind that Florence is unique, and in serving Florence and as a lifelong member of this community, we are unique in many ways, and the best way to figure out what's needed is to know your audience. If we cut Zoom off, that's, that's just gonna further cause folks to not be able to participate, and people just aren't going to choose life and the things that go on over a council meeting. At least this way, folks can jump on. I want to thank you for your time, and I hope that you all have a very good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Yes, and we are also receipt of your email as well, so, very good. Not seeing any others for call to public. As a reminder, we do have a second call to the public at the end of the meeting if you change your mind. With that, we'll go to item number 10, Public Carriages and Presentations. 10A, Presentation on Acceptance by Motion of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Fiscal Year 24. Mr. Dudding and Mr. Herr, again, I was saying.
Good evening again, mayors, vice mayors, councilmembers. My name is Ben Herr. I'm with the Fester and Chapman. We have performed the Town of Florence's Annual Comprehensive Annual Financial Reports Audit for the year ended June 30th of 2024. This is our results for you. Basically, this presentation is consisted of the two parts. First part is audit results summaries. We included financial statements audit reports, single audit reports, and a report to the Mayor and Town Council. Second part of the presentation will be about the financial overview based on the information we obtained from the town's financial statements. First, financial statements audit. We issued a modified opinion on the town's effort, which means town's financial statements are presented fairly in all material aspect in accordance, in accordance with the gap, and that we do not have any deficiencies, either mature weaknesses or significant deficiencies reported related to the town's internal control over financial reporting. However, we have one advisory comment included and communicate to you that is related to developments of comprehensive plan and policies to strengthening IT controls. Single audit reports. When the non-federal entity received more than $750,000 in federal grants, single audit is required, so we actually performed the single audit based on the town's federal programs. One of the program we selected and tested was a federal assistance listing number 21027, which is COVID-19 Coronavirus State and the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. We do not have any deficiencies included related to the internal controls over compliance for the major program we tested, or nor, no, non, we do not have a non-compliance issue reported. Report to the mayors and town councils is, as I mentioned, this is a required communication for the auditors to the governors to note that all the issues happens during the audit process. One of the key areas on this report is about sensitive estimates and disclosure included with the town's financial statements. So we noted that pension liabilities from the pension liability in the note is significant because of the sensitive actuarial valuation included with that. Allowances for the doubtful accounts and the useful life for the capital assets were also considered, it has a sensitive estimation and no disclosure. We do not have any difficulties encountered during the performance of our audit. No disagreement with the management has been reported. This is second part of the presentations about the financial overview. As of the June 30th, 2024, town's financial statements reported total asset and the deferred outflow of 272 million, which is made up of 128 millions of capital asset and then 118 millions of cash and investments. When it comes down to total liabilities and the default inflow side of it, total of the 53 millions are reported. That 53 million is made up of 41 millions of the long-term debt and then 5.5 millions of current payables, which resulted in town's net positions down to 290 million. Out of that, 98 million is a net investment in capital asset, 61 million is reported under the restricted, another 61 million is reported and as unrestricted. The revenues during the 2024, the town's financial statements reported is total revenue of 62 millions. Out of that, 13.6 million is, came from the charge for services, which approximately 22% of the total revenue. Another 12.6 million dollars came from state share revenues, and then 10.5 million dollars of sales tax revenue. Expense side, total expense of the 43 millions were reported in the town's financial statements... Expense side, total expense of the 43 millions were reported in the town's financial statements. 11 million was spent for highways and the streets. 10 million dollars was spent for the public safeties and 7.3 million dollars were for general government. And then 8 million dollars were business type activities. This is a five-year trend based off of those revenue and expenses. From the revenue side, as you can see, the yellow line is from the grants and contribution revenue. So other revenues is kind of wire showing that trending up the grabs. And then this one is a little bit more increases. We thinking that it's kind of came from the coronavirus related grants is realized during the 2024. From the expense side, as you can see, that is pretty much is kind of very flat changes, except the highway and streets. The fluctuation in the highway street expenditures was increases in expenditures from the CFT projects. So there is the end of my presentations. Do you have any questions for me?
So any questions for Mr. Herr?
You had a question?
A new vice mayor?
Earlier in the first part of your presentation, you mentioned strengthening IT control was a comment. What does that mean?
So that is kind of the new areas. We just got to spend more times to the audit process. We are financial auditors. We are not the IT auditors. But as our professional standard requires, considering the importance of the IT controls, we actually just kind of like start looking at some basic control environments over the ITs. From our observations is, I think the town could benefit from have a little formal extensive policies and procedures in the areas that you want to take a look at and the areas of like doing like formal risk assessments and then just kind to see, evaluate what kind of areas you can improve your controls. So those kind of things is, it's not findings, but that's what we just kind of like from our observations, definitely can benefit to the towns. That's why we put in the writings for you.
Thank you.
So council member, Bencina.
I don't have a question for you, but I just want to congratulate our director of finance and his fine team for a great audit. Thank you.
So that was taken it right out of my mouth as well. Thank you to Fester and Chapman. You guys continue to do a good job for us. And Carl, please let your team know that we do appreciate that as well. So with that, I will be looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the annual comprehensive financial report for full year 24. Second.
We have a motion and a second on 10A. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Thank you so much once again.
All right. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Item 10B, presentation of awards to winners of the Mary on Main Street Window Decorating Contest. Crystal. I was getting ready to say something fun, but I didn't want to offend our financial people. So. Yeah, so they're out now, so I can say that now.
That's fair. Good evening, Mayor Eaton, Vice Mayor Adam and the council members. Appreciate you guys having me tonight. My name is Crystal Onaki. I'm the Recreation Superintendent for the Community Services Department. And I am here to talk a little bit about the Mary on Main Street Window Decorating Contest and announce the winners. So I just want to go over a quick timeline with you of what we did for the contest in an effort to celebrate the holidays with our Main Street merchants. We resurrected the Mary on Main Street Window Decorating Contest. In November, we started marketing the program both via email and on foot to all of the merchants on Main Street. And we had seven participating Main Street businesses that registered for the contest. And then we kicked off the contest at the Hometown Holiday Parade on December 6. And we had people vote via the survey Polco. And we closed that at 5:00 PM on December 24th. And we received 117 total votes. So we had seven participating businesses, like I mentioned. Those seven are Copper Coyote, Main Street Fabric Company, Belva's Real Estate LLC, You're Behind Barbecue, Birds and Bones, The Station Coffee Company, Liz Aguilar State Farm and Sweet Peas Candy Shop. And you can see here on the right of your screen that we distributed this flyer with a map of all the businesses with a QR code. We actually handed this out during our Hometown Holiday Parade, encouraged citizens to go ahead and check that out before the parade and go ahead and vote for your best overall, most creative and merriest. So I just have a few slides with some photos of various businesses that participated. Here we have Belva's Real Estate LLC. And then on the left, you'll see, this is from Copper Coyote. That's their window with their vanna displaying the window there. And then on the right, you'll see the fitness center. We did not participate officially, but we wanted to make sure that we were being just as festive as all the other merchants. And then here we have The Station Coffee Company. And last but not least in our slide here, we have on the left Sweet Peas Candy Shop and on the right Birds and Bones, You're Behind Barbecue. So as you can see here, we had three categories, merriest, most creative and best overall. The Station Coffee Company swept all three. They did a great job of marking it via their social media. So I think kudos to them for that. So with that being said, I can take any questions that you might have on the contest.
Does council have any questions? Job well done, I will say that. And they all looked very nice. I did vote.
They did a great job. Thank you.
Good job to everyone. Even though we're not participating for votes, we probably need to step up our game. Ours looked a little lame there on that. So just so you know.
All right, all right. Fair enough.
So that would be my opinion.
Criticism received.
Very good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, at this time, I want to ask Debbie and John and Kelly to meet the mayor, vice mayor and council to receive their awards.
Meet us on the floor. All right. Thank you, council. And once again, thank you for that. Crystal also for that program you guys put on. So all right. Item number 11 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Does anybody have anything from items A through F that they'd like to pull off?
I do.
Okay, vice mayor?
I would like to pull out item F, appoint me of Reggie McKay to Board of Appeals.
Okay, item F will be voted on separately then. Anybody else? All right, I'll need a motion to approve A through E consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Item F, appointment of Reggie McKay to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire December 31, 2028.
So I would just like to make a statement that some of you know Reggie McKay is my partner. So I will recuse myself from this vote.
Very good. Thank you, vice mayor. With that, I need a motion to approve item F.
I make a motion to approve item F, appointment of Reggie McKay to the Board of Appeals with a term to expire December 31, 2028.
Second.
Okay, whichever one you see. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion?
I want to say something. I just want to say that that was a very good choice of appointment. He's done a lot for this town and he is an expert. Good choice.
And I don't know who talked him into it, but finally he's helping the town like this, like he's helped us in many other ways. So we appreciate that. So with that, we have a motion and a second. No other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good. Motion passed. Thank you so much. Item 12, unfinished business. Ordinance number 745-25, discussion approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving a zone change for approximately 110 acres known as Bowling Industrial 110 in Florence, Arizona, from rural agricultural RA 10 and rural agricultural RA 4 to light industrial LI. Assessor partial numbers as written. Ms. Benitez.
That. There's two. Because it was here on the six. Do you have a new one?
F.
Okay, we'll pull up the.
This one?
Yeah, go ahead and pull up that one.
Let's start there.
Okay.
Mayor, vice mayor, member of the council. Tonight was our second reading for the Bowling 110 rezoning. The app, I don't know if I need to go back through all this, but this is a 110 acre site. It's located the southeast of diversion dam road and bowling road. And the rezoning is from rural agricultural RA 10 and rural agricultural RA 4 to light industrial. This site has currently been, or historically was used for agricultural by the Langley Holdings Groups. That is the site that is being considered tonight. This rezoning was brought to the town council January 6. They had a public hearing. Several members of the public came forward and expressed their concerns about safety, possible traffic and other comments they just had in general about whether what was going to be there or not going to be there. We did have a condition that was put forward by the applicant and they'll go over the changes that they've made to this condition since then. But when reviewing this rezoning, town council should consider that the site proposed matches the surrounding land uses and that the rezoning will meet the 2022 general plan, access to the site and the impossible impacts it has on the surrounding properties. Public participation. We had the mailed notice 300 feet. It was also posted in the local newspaper for the public hearings and a sign was posted on site. The neighborhood meeting took place on November 6th and on Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing on December 5th. And members of the public spoke then and they had similar concerns that you had heard on the January 6 meeting. I had an additional slide on uses, but apparently it didn't make it into this one. I wish I had the book with me, but I do not. So I apologize for that. I will bring up the applicant to go ahead and give their short presentation.
Thank you, Mari.
So many clicks.
Ms. Garcia, while they are getting this, so just clarification, this is not a public hearing. This is an action item.
Sir, this is an action item, but if you'd like to open it for public comment, you may.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Back again, Jennifer Ruby, this time on behalf of Langley Comeno Holdings. Our address for the record is 2738 East Guadalupe Road, Gilbert, Arizona, 85234. Much like Mari mentioned, our presentation is repetitive. So I won't go through slide by slide. Obviously, welcome any questions if you need reminded of anything or there's clarifications. What I'd like to focus on is that additional stip or condition, we say now. We talked about this a little bit the last time we were here, the idea of increasing the perimeter setback to 50 feet all the way around, rather than 50 and 25 depending on the condition. What we are, we've modified that a little bit largely with very welcome collaboration with staff. They've been great helping us talk through how to make it really clear so that the public and especially council and staff over time have a very clear interpretation. I believe Mari had printouts of it. Do they already have those? Great, okay, so you have them in your packet. So you'll notice that the big change is really, we had proposed before blah, 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 minimum 50 foot building setback from all perimeter property lines. After discussion with staff, we realized that that maybe could get confusing over time if there were splits or different parcels developed or just, we were trying to think through unintended consequences. So what we are proposing, I think with staff support, is the developer shall provide a minimum 50 foot building setback from all abutting residentially zoned properties. And abutting, I'm sure you all are familiar, but just for the record for everyone, abutting in your code is defined as two adjoining properties sharing a common property line, also where they adjoin at a corner, which I think is an important nuance, but not including parcels that are separated by a street or an alley. So in this case, it would be those residential properties that we've talked about in the various public hearings up till now. So again, the big change is really, rather than saying all perimeter property lines, we're saying abutting residentially zoned properties, obviously much more specific, hopefully much clearer over time. With that, I'll take any questions. Or again, if you'd like me to run through any of the slides, I'm happy to.
Does council have any questions or further clarification? Vice mayor?
So two things. I have a question. It seems to be a dark cloud over uses of light industrial. I don't know how many times we've asked for that. Is it possible to add that into the package so that the residents can see what that means?
I'll let staff address that. I think that's more appropriate.
I'm not sure we need to see this now.
Sure.
But I'd like it to be in the package online so that the residents can finally go in and see the list of the different types of businesses that can come in there.
Sure. So just one. of mine is that, and again, staff, this is really a staff call, but maybe what over time might be better is a reference to the section in the code listing those uses because those uses do sometimes change over time. So if we codify them, which is probably the wrong legal term, if we establish them specifically as a list in this ordinance and then your code changes over time, I'm just not sure what.
I think if we could just do both and put a slide into the deck because as a resident and I've been on planning and zoning, I don't find going to the code very easy to read.
Sure.
So just a one pager and should, should it change? It changes and that's, that's fine, I understand, but.
So, you want to?
My, my other question was, I want to thank you for allowing this stipulation, I think that's really very excellent. Is there, was there any more conversation about the wall height?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, we intend to follow the code depending on the ultimate use.
All right, Councilmember Boochalata?
I was also going to say, I appreciate that you guys did 50 feet from the abutting, so I like that. I also agree with Kathy, it just makes it really hard to translate when I was trying to look in the code to see if a solar farm could ever be there because that's something that I don't think would be appropriate for that area. I really couldn't find the answer, so I know if we're struggling with this, then you know the residents probably are too, so it's just a recommendation to just streamline it. Thank you.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you for changing the verbiage on that, it makes it more clear and concise. So a recommendation for the staff is probably put something in there like C or put a link in there, this link to this town code so that way you just click on it and it could just take you there, something simple. So like I said, if the code does change or whatnot, that's fine, but just a little quick and easy link, click on this and man, it takes you right there.
And I might add, I do know that at the community meeting, that you did have copies of that for the community that was meeting, that was meeting there. I do remember seeing that and having that discussion there too, so it seems like an easy fix for us. Mari?
I do have a slide that shows, that lists the uses that are permitted, conditional not permitted, somehow it didn't make it in tonight. We, is this going, is this going to be conditioned in the ordinance or do you want this as just like a general posting to the?
Just, I, I, my opinion, I think it's just a general, general information. For part of my comments was too, like other council members, I appreciate, because we physically watched you working with the people, the community and them and I have great confidence in your organization to, to give us the best that we can have. And I do know that anything outside of that, the codes would have to come back as a CUP or anything, it would have to come back before council again. And this will all be back before planning and zoning as well. So.
Okay.
Is that, okay. Good, council?
I remember when I attended the neighborhood meeting and Jen, you, you stated some usage. A lot of those usages will not be suitable for that land because of location. And I talked to a friend of mine that oversees massive solar farms across the United States and 110 acres is too small for anybody to really want to put solar, so he would doubt, he didn't say you wouldn't, couldn't see it, but he said you would doubt because of how big it was. But there's, there's a lot of usage for that land and then, you know, you're not going to see a car dealership go out there in that land, which is one of the usages. Fast food restaurants, that won't happen either, so anyway, but I agree with him, if we can tie a link or add it so residents can read it, works for me too.
Sure, and just to be real clear, I want to make sure my comments earlier weren't, aren't interpreted as an objection to that, I, I don't think at all. I just think if you were talking about putting in the ordinance, that gets a little tricky, but as a reference point, absolutely.
Okay, very good, very good. With that, if there's no other questions, could I have a motion please? I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 745-25, changing of the zoning for approximately 110 acres known as Bowling Industrial 110 with the four staff recommendations and the stipulations provided dated 1/21/25 by the developer tonight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Very good, thank you so much. New business 13B, ordinance number 750-25, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County.
May I make one, one, ask one question?
I skipped one.
The suggestions to the stipulations, those, were those added?
Those, those were, those were for?
Okay, very good.
Yes. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Okay. 13A, I had already scratched it off before, sorry about that. Ordinance 749-25, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances, Chapter 150, Technical Codes, Section 150-300B, Addendum and Alternatives to the Technical Codes, Deleting Subsection R 903.2.31, Group E Providing for Severability and Declaring an Emergency. Director Monroe. Good evening AJ.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. It's good to see you all this evening. Yes, so before you, for your consideration tonight would be an amendment to the town code to remove the stipulation or the, the ordinance that's here. As we've worked internally with staff, with fire, we really think that this, this code is very restrictive and is going, and may have a negative impact on community vitality, specifically as it relates to its impacts on, on some of the businesses that are in place and provide some really essential services to the community. So it would be our recommendation to remove this local amendment. We would be then going back to the 2018 IFC and the requirements for sprinklers that it highlights in the code.
All right, very good. Council have any questions? It was very clear in the packet, this goes along with I believe most everybody up here that agrees that streamlining our processes and making it a more kinder town to work within. So, and as we know, anybody that works with codes, we do find those that, that sometimes are too restrictive. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a comment, I would, I would like for it to be more clear for the public what's the difference in, in stating the code as far as just saying, going back to the code, can we hear what the actual code would be? As far as, and I know it would be going from zero to back to the, if, if we can get a little clarification for everybody.
Absolutely, so the proposed change is to eliminate the local amendment that triggered the need for fire sprinklers at zero square feet. So, Councilmember Neal, so going back to the code that I referenced, we would be going back to the 2018 International Fire Code that requires for Group E occupancy sprinklers in areas that are greater than 12,000 square feet. So the base code in the 2018 IFC is 12,000 square feet is the trigger that would require fire sprinklers.
Thank you very much. I know we had some local business, very old local businesses that would have been very seriously hurt by this and glad to see it not happen to them.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I appreciate that, Councilmember Neal, because I'm one of the local business owners that got caught in this overly excessive change. And when we sit here, there were I believe at least three readings of this ordinance when we changed it and we went away from the standard code and decided we're special, we're going to have our own version. When you don't put it in English as, as Councilmember Neal asked, nobody understands and that passed with unanimous vote. That means your storage shed, my container, Napa Auto Parts, the museum, we were all required to put sprinklers in, which is not a good idea, right? So at the end of the day, I think this is a great example, when you're bringing changes to the code to the public, I'd love to see an example in English of what that actually means in practicality and use an anonymous business on Main Street or we did this to Florence Gardens or whatever the case may be. We need those examples to put that reality to it.
Any other comments? Councilmember Benson?
I agree with the Vice Mayor and Councilman Neal that this is a great, great change that will greatly help possibly seeing some businesses opened in some vacant buildings.
Okay, no other comments? Now I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 749-25, ordinance of Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, amending the town code, Florence Code of Ordinances, Chapter 150, Technical Codes, Section 150.300B, Addendum and Alternatives to the Technical Codes, Deleting Subsection R 903.2.31, Group E Providing for Severability and Declaring an Emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you AJ.
Welcome.
All right. 13B, ordinance 750-25, discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances Title, Title 15, land usage, that caught me off guard there. So land usage, Chapter 150, Development Code, Sections 150.015 and 150.023 as outlined in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency. AJ, once again.
Yes, good evening, once again. What we have before you tonight is an amendment to Chapter 150 to comply with recent statutory requirements from the legislature. These requirements are all meant to streamline processes, to help developers better understand, you know, when they're going to get our answer, also that they can move their projects forward. And it holds us to, to that, to that rigor. The, the call to action form on page two goes into detail specifically about what those changes to the code would be. The first has to do with amendments to zone changes and protest and it, and it provides guidance as to how we will determine if there are 20% of the public who would like to protest a zone amendment. And the specific language, the changes is it excludes government as, in that calculation in determining the 20% who may be against a, a zone change. The second has to do with administrative review as applications are presented to the department. And it puts some rigor on the director in the department to make sure that those reviews are done in a timely fashion so that the development community can proceed. And it holds us all to a standard of we have 180 days to provide an answer to, to the question. I'm happy to report that we already do this, so we just got a little extra nudge from the state, but I'm happy to report that the town, as we review projects and consider development and the future, that we are living up to these standards. So I'm happy to report that, but we needed to do this, so we're doing this, but now we have it in writing as well as just good practice.
All right, very good. Thank you so much AJ. Any comments from council and questions? Not seeing any, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 750-25, ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, amending the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances, Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 150, Development Code, Sections 150 dash, 150.015 and 150.023 as outlined in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second on the floor, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you AJ.
Thank you.
Item 13C, ordinance 751-25 is a first reading of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Administration by amending Section 330.22 titled Regular Meetings. Ms. Garcia?
Mayor, Members of Council, the next three items are all based on your work session that you held. This particular ordinance, ordinance number 751-25, this changes our dates from the first and third Mondays to the first and third Tuesday. It also allows for us to go dark the month of July. This is just the first reading.
Okay, very good, first reading. Is any questions from council members?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor?
So later on the agenda, there's another item that I think references, it sounds very similar, but did we also not talk about going dark the second meeting of December?
That's already in code.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other comments? All right, at that, that's point, I'll entertain a motion for item 13C.
First reading.
Or it's a first reading, never mind.
Yeah, not an emergency item.
Okay, very good. That does make it go quicker, doesn't it? Item 13D is another first reading. Ordinance 752-25, it is the first reading of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, amending Title III of the Town Code entitled Administration by amending Section 30, Title Ordinances and Contract Sections 30.45-30.54.
Mayor, Members of Council, this ordinance takes and it makes sure that we are streamlining business as you have requested. This takes us from two readings of an ordinance to one reading of an ordinance. So the first night it appears, council will either vote on that item, table that item or defer the item when it comes back. It also goes ahead and makes sure that we are aligning our ordinance readings the same as the state and publishing the same as the state. That means that we will only pay to publish the ordinances when there is a penalty clause. We already do that pursuant to state law. So it just aligns it and it just sets forth in the code, signatory requirements the same as they are in the procurement policies and that is that the mayor is our signature on contracts or the town manager. And, and we've added for items that need, ordinances and resolutions that need to be recorded are any that include selling or purchasing property must be recorded. Those are your changes and again, it is the first reading.
Okay, thank you very much. Item F, discussion approval, oh, hang on, item E, Resolution 1926-25, discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, establishing regular meeting locations, dates and times for Town of Florence Town Council and Town Boards and Commissions. Ms. Garcia?
This is an ordinance that gives, this is a resolution that provides notice to the public of when regular meetings are held. So resolutions take 30 days to go ahead and implement, so by adopting this tonight, we will be able to come back in, give notice to the public and in March, we will start having our meetings in Tuesdays. So that will allow for us to start posting our Leadership Academy. Originally, we were thinking our Leadership Academy was going to be on Tuesday, but now with the adoption, we're going to switch our Leadership Academy to Monday, start advertising to seek candidates and our council meetings will start on Tuesday, the first meeting in March. We will post the first note, first one as a special meeting and the second one will then be our regular meetings.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, I will entertain a motion for approval or disapproval of this resolution.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1926-25, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, establishing regular meeting locations, dates and times for Town of Florence Town Council and Town Boards and Commissions.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any other? We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Thank you. Now, item F, discussion approval, disapproval of amending the contract amount for MGC contractors for water resource treatment services via change order. The revised job total order contract amount will not exceed $500,000. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The original contract was for small ancillary projects. It's very typical of the water and wastewater community. So sometimes it could be a small amount of aging piping that could either be leaking or cracking, or maybe it's completely failed. And so the amount was much smaller because there weren't large, specific projects associated with that job order contract. One of the projects that was associated deals with our ADQ actionable item for the tertiary disc filters, which I believe you guys approved at the last meeting. Just upstream of the tertiary disc filters is piping that is associated with the pumps on the EQ Basin. Those pumps send essentially the unfiltered water from the EQ Basin after the process to the tertiary disc filters, and in theory, through the upcoming UV project. Those disc filters cannot take any larger debris. It would seem kind of common sense that they are the filters themselves, but they need pre-screening. So this project required what is referred to as basket strainers upstream of it. And that project was originally going to be approximately $50,000. Once they started opening things up, the piping in that area had failed, there's concrete failure, and so the entire thing has to be dug up, stabilized, slurried, recompacted, new piping, and the original basket strainers installed. So with that, there is a request to increase the contract amount to accommodate this needed project, to stay permit compliant, as well as still have the original use of that job order contract. So town staff is asking for an increase of that contract to 500,000, which approximately almost 300 is being used on one particular project. So the change is, the increase is basically one-to-one of the project cost. Are there any additions, are there any questions as it relates to this item?
Council, council members, any questions? Councilmember Bencina?
So was the 50,000 a CIP project? This is increasing the CIP project?
No, because the original, the original need for that did not come up until a site visit with the contractor to determine that there was no upstream filtering of that. So that contractor was, again, at the last meeting, we approved a contract for Kruger, doing, which is usually known as Violia in the industry, and when they came out on site, they said, this item, which we don't sell and we don't service, is missing and is absolutely necessary for your disc filters to work. It is an industry standard. In fact, they essentially would refuse to turn on their product without that in place, knowing that it would just be a disaster, and we would just damage everything that we had spent, to the detriment of the town, not to them, because we'd be buying more filters from them. So it seemed like, again, after research, this is a much-needed item, these...
I can agree with that. So just asking if this is just increasing CIP, and I'm assuming we have the funding to handle this easily, from what might be...
We do, we do have the funding through reallocations within our current CIP budget.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
So Director Solis, the original contract, it says something in here about, we need these folks for doing things that we don't know how to do. But these general services listed, is this just a boilerplate? Because one of the things on here is water meter services, that they provide service to read and install and turn off water meters. Do we not have that skill? And I thought we went to smart meters.
We do have that skill, and to answer your question, that is just the general scope of work.
Got it.
So it could include, in the event of, again, maybe COVID-type of an event, we would have flexibility within to be able to utilize them for that. But this contract is much more than what we just can't do in-house. It's what we're either maybe not necessarily efficient to do in-house and/or limited in resources. So if we have a large project, the guys already have a daily routine, they are not going to do a great job of then taking on a large project and everything else. So it's to supplement staff as well.
My other question is, on several of these, I don't really care where you dig in the five parks or downtown area. We pretty much know that we're not going to find an infrastructure that's intact. And I guess what I'm asking for is, when we do these sizings and scoping, I don't know, I guess the norm is you add a 10% uplift on risk factor. Should we not be considering that when we scope out these jobs, it's going to be more expensive? You would hit the lottery if you dug somewhere and found good infrastructure. So knowing that, I know you don't know exactly what the burst pipes are going to look like, or exactly what has to be replaced. It seems like we're surprised every time we dig.
I mean, to have additional contingency would be welcomed by staff, obviously, but we can discuss that with the town manager and deputy town manager, and how we further, you know, take on these projects. But things that we can't see, not transportation projects, but things that we can't see on the piping network, is much more difficult to scope without doing a pre-service, if you will. And that kind of goes in line with what we do with the job order contracting. They're supposed to be working as an extension of staff, and that's exactly what happened. But we had no idea to the extents that would need to be repaired.
So all I'm saying is, 10% contingency is not enough. Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the amending contract amount with MGC contractors for water resource treatment services via change order. The revised total job order contract amount will not exceed 500,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. Thank you, Chris. Well, I guess you've got another one. Item G, discussion approval, disapproval of entering into a cooperative use contract with Wilson &amp; Company, Inc., Engineers and Architects via Pinal County Contract Number 205926R0Q, or OQ, for on-call transportation planning services associated with the development of the Town of Florence 2025 Regional Transportation Plan, in an amount not to exceed $170,730.
So there's been a lot of discussion as it relates to our planning level documents, including our transportation plan or plans, what the county has done as it relates to some of their smaller, broken-off DCRs, if you will, their Parkway DCR. I believe we started the original, since I've been here, transportation plan in 2018. I think we published like the first draft, the, if you will, the existing conditions in 2019. That was done through a PARA grant, through the Arizona Department of Transportation, or commonly referred to as ADOT. There were certain constraints with that plan. The town would like to update that plan in its entirety, and there are some, there's some extremely key fundamentals as to how that plan would differ from the existing, and I would say what's typically done. What is typically done is you do a 20-year outlook or horizon, and you look at all of that growth that you're going to do, or expect to have done. With that said, not to segue, but sometimes Project A doesn't develop, but Project C does. So we see sort of that, still that growth, but it may not happen site by site. So we look at a 20-year horizon, and we look at long-term, midterm, and short-term projects. Short-term being one to five years, midterm being five to 10 years, and long-term, or out-years is 10 to 20. But we track that, and that's why it's very common, specifically in the transportation world, to have a 20-year CIP. We're looking at the solvency of the agency itself to make sure, are we going to be able to have these projects that were expected? How are we going to maybe subsidize some of those improvements through our IIP study, our Infrastructure Improvement Plan, and how we assess our diff fees? We look at possibly bonding opportunities. All that happens from that high-level study. But oftentimes, quite honestly, 20 years is probably not a long enough outlook on these things. Specifically, as it relates to what happens in the other side, in community development, in the PADs, what we're looking at doing in this study, and a few other communities in the state have done something similar, is where we look at a build-out condition, where all of these zonings, all of these areas that have zoning are essentially populated in the computer model, and it says, this is the size of the road you will need. Not in 20 years, not in 30 years, but when it builds out. So we don't miss that opportunity, where sometimes you'll be driving in Phoenix in particular, and it'll be two southbound lanes and three northbound lanes, and that northbound lane is literally a sidewalk and then a block wall. There's not even an ounce of dirt there. So they miss those opportunities. This plan will look at updating this from a long-term perspective of what right-of-way we are going to need. And, you know, it kind of comes up pretty regularly about Felix Road, for example, and it's only a two-lane road, and that's all it's ever going to be, or that's all it should ever be. Well, regionally, that road's going to carry almost 47,000 cars in the long-term future, maybe even more. We will also be assessing and updating our short-term, midterm, and long-term projects associated with that, and probably doing a better job of distinguishing, in the last transportation plan, those projects don't necessarily clearly identify the owners of those facilities. So several of those projects are not town projects. They are county projects, they are state projects, and they're not the Town of Florence. We'd like to clear that confusion up as well, and say, these are needed for the region to work, but not necessarily are the responsibility of the town. So those are kind of the high-level concepts that we get out of this, and again, is what will be used to ensure that we're asking for the right right-of-way minimally, and then after that, the improvements that, you know, again, should be associated. This also dovetails into our, again, our Infrastructure Improvement Plan, where we look at these needed improvements, and we look at the gaps in where developer A is planning on, developer C is planning on, but there's a gap between there. That's where we want to assess that development impact fee. We don't want to assess that development impact fee in an area that we know that's going to develop, because then the development community will only then request payback for those fees, and that's the way the current law reads. So we only assess essentially, if you will, in the gaps, or we could use the word, where leapfrog development has occurred, so that we have a discontinuity between developments, which is, there's nothing that staff can do to stop development occurring. I mean, I cut my teeth in an area where I think it was like seven miles between where Tortosa started and where the rest of Maricopa kind of existed, and they had to build that entire area there, but it was still leapfrog development, and it, you know, it causes problems. So those are some of the high-level reasoning as to why that we need to update this study, and it is definitely due, and it's been something that we've been discussing for several months, and we've put together, again, a scope of work with Wilson, who's done several of these types of studies in the region. Are there any questions as it relates to this item?
All right. Yes. Councilmember Bedford?
Did we do an assessment on Hunt Highway?
Uh...
What you're speaking about? Did we do an assessment on Hunt Highway?
I'm not sure what you mean by assessment, ma'am. I mean, are we talking about the structural section? Are we talking about...
We're talking about the highway.
During, during the last assessment, I would assume.
I know we had one. We had a study.
So I think I can answer that question. We have evaluated the structural section in its entirety. We have plans to do improvements on that. We have counted traffic on that to determine when widening is needed. But there's not a specific study that's related to just Hunt Highway. It's, the entire study relates to all the different traffic. You don't generally look at just one singular road. But yeah, that Hunt Highway is included, would be included in this scope of work as well.
Yeah. So it's basically an update of one that we have, and I'm glad to see this. I know the county's doing theirs and trying to work through. So hopefully, what we can get out of here, because I don't think it's a secret to anybody, that transportation is an extremely high priority, specifically widening of Hunt Highway and different things. I realize this doesn't glue right down onto some of that stuff, but just know that we're expecting out of these, these, these reviews, real numbers, real low-hanging fruit that we can jump right on. So, but I was happy to see that this is coming about at this time as an update. It's long overdue, I think. Any council have anything else?
Question.
Of course, Vice Mayor?
So I'm just going to ask about, what is this on-call services? Are they writing this strategy, or how was, it says on-call services, transportation planning services?
So there are multiple ways that we could have procured a consultant. Utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement, we were able to select Wilson through an on-call that Pinal County has and utilizes. They use them to do some of their, again, DCR work, and we've used that as our procurement method to scope and write a contract for ourselves. But we are not necessarily doing this as an on-call. This is a singular service. It will have essentially the singular deliverable. We would have to come back to council afterwards to either amend the scope, or maybe, again, if maybe after this whole thing is done, maybe there are other items that we would look to look at in particular. That's not the purposes of this. It's not an on-call contract. We're doing a particular one item, which is the transportation study.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Well, we know Hunt is behind times in getting widened up to Sandtown, and so, especially from the residents in Florence and Merrill Ranch, and workers that come in and out of our town on a daily basis. So I do see that this is a budgeted item, with some money transferred from a shortfall on the CIP project to help fund it. So we're not doing an out-of-budget approval of $170,000. So that's good.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve entering into cooperative use contract with Wilson &amp; Company Engineers and Architects via the Pinal County Contract Number 205926ROQ for on-call transportation planning services, in the amount not to exceed $170,730.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All opposed? All right, thank you. Item H, discussion approval, disapproval, or ratification of an amendment number one with signature project for the construction of the T-117 Public Works Block Wall Project in the amount of $82,683.73.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, if I can discuss this one real quick. I'd like to stand in front of this one. This, as you know, is a ratification. I want you to know that I talked to all directors. Anytime that there is an expenditure that exceeds what council has approved, that item is to come back for council approval. That is effective immediately. I just want council to know that we have addressed this.
So, Mr. Manager, so with clarification, so the $50,000 is approval of the town manager approves that, correct? Are you talking about anything over your approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any questions on this? Councilmember Bedford.
It's my sincere hope, Town Manager, that this project, such as this one, doesn't get approved without council's notification.
Yes, ma'am. I hear you, and we will make sure that council is abreast of any situation that goes beyond what council has approved.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember?
Is there any way that we could just explain why we need the additional $82,683.73, just for clarification?
The why and not the timing. Okay.
Well, just so the residents understand.
No, no, I, yeah. So during the construction of the block wall, early on, it was found that the soil conditions were much worse as we dug down than what was anticipated. It is not necessarily typical to do a full-blown geotechnical investigation for a standard block wall, if you will. There was some minimal soil sampling, but once it was dug down, the size of the footing had to be increased. So you see in the scope of work, the additional concrete that is needed, the additional rebar that is needed, and as explained in the RCA, there is two additional courses that were needed, else aesthetically, it would appear unpleasant for the outside. So those were the main changes on the block wall. There was also a need to accommodate the fire department's ability to enter the site in a manner that works with the equipment that they have. So we decided on using RFID readers, and that was a change of 24,000 as well, to accommodate the fire department's code requirements. Are there any other clarification as to the needs of the change order?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, how about the additional gate on Ruggles? That was not part of the original scope? How did that come about?
It was part of the scope, but not motorized, yes. The utility department had asked for an additional motorized gate for their operations. So we obviously accommodated the needs based on, again, oftentimes, hours of operation existing way beyond an eight-to-five job, but it was a request made and justification provided as to why.
I'm trying to understand, because you have two other new gates built into the wall and two manual gates. Why did you need another gate on Ruggles? It cost additional money, and I'm not sure that that had to or should have gone through HDAC, but it's unsightly, and I'm trying to understand why it was necessary.
I was not the project manager at that time of the project. I'm not 100% positive. I just know it was discussed, and that was a request of the utility department.
Lastly, I guess I'd say this. You and I tangled on the wall at well number five, and if you came to council and asked for $500,000 for a CMU wall, I don't think council, I would not have approved it. So I don't know how we got up to half a million dollars for a simple block wall. And I'm asking, this is just a masonry wall. Why are we going through a general contractor? Why didn't we just go out to bid with the masonry company?
We did put it out for bid. The low bid was a general contractor.
Why did you need a GC? That's a middleman. Just pay the masonry company.
We don't need a middleman. The middleman was the low bidder. No one else was below that person. We don't have an ability to choose.
But was GC?
It was. That was the low bid.
Did you ask masonry companies to bid?
I believe there was a reaching out of multiple contractors to do this type of work.
I'm not getting an answer if it was just a masonry company, because a general contractor uplifts the price. What I'm trying to get to is that, I feel, I may be the only one, but I feel it's unreasonable to spend $500,000 on a block wall.
I, that was also gonna be my sentiment. It was hard for me the first time to approve the 500,000, but the wall was already taken apart at that time, so we really didn't have, I guess, much of a choice. I do remember it going out for bid, but that's kind of what I was getting at, is I didn't remember the multiple gates in there. I just assumed there was gonna be the one entrance into the back and the one exit, so I guess I just asked, would we be going over if we didn't do those extra things? And if those weren't brought before council in the agreement and in the contract, then I agree, it should have come to us again, because if we wouldn't have done that, then it probably wouldn't have pushed us over. And I'm not blaming you if you weren't the project manager. It's just these things right here that, you know, we just need to be transparent about, because it's coming out of taxpayers' money. And it was hard for me to say yes the first time, but we really didn't have much of a choice, as the wall was already taken down. So that's just kind of what I wanted to say about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bencina?
Councilwoman Nicole, I think you've got two walls mixed up. The well number five was 400,000, right? And Ruggles was 500,000. So there's a total of 900,000 of walls. I would have thought for that amount of money, we could have got some people out here to bid those walls, but maybe not. Town manager, you and I have swapped emails on this issue, and I would hope too, that the next time we write up one of these things, that when we say a no vote, we're saying here that the block wall will not be done. If we vote no tonight, that's untrue, so. And I would just hope that we follow our policies. Now, I agree with Vice Mayor Adam. It sure is bad-looking on that Ruggles gate to look through there as you drive through there, so I would hope our Director of Utilities would get it cleaned up, because it looks pretty bad. A nice, solid gate would have been a lot better. And I could agree with her, I don't even know why a gate should have been put there, because they have access to that area by coming in the other gates. But here we are. I hope this doesn't come before us again, where we're seeking approval after the fact.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmember, councilmember Bencina, you guys are being heard loud and clear. When I had conversations with each of you today, I made note of the concerns that you had. Once again, I firmly expect the direction that I've talked to the directors about in terms of ratification, to follow policy. We will ensure that it happens, and anytime that there is an expenditure that exceeds what council has authorized, it will come back before you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Neal?
I wanna know when this project is scheduled to be finished up.
The project is near completion. We are working, I believe, on more of a software implementation for people who, maybe yourselves, maybe in the audience. There is an application available called MyQ, and you utilize your phone to be able to open doors, your garage doors at your house. Something very similar to that is what is being utilized to coordinate all of these RFID chips. So they are just working on the final implementation, setting up an account for that. I would say in the very near coming weeks, the project is complete. It just needs to have that final implementation. I don't want to say it'll be done this week, but probably no later than the end of February on that part there. We're having a hard time, I guess, with a commercial account person, like I said, setting this up in its final form.
I mean, not at all trying to beat a dead horse. I mean, it was loud and clear up here. It just, it went pretty bad, and the citizens from Florence had paid attention to it. Talked to some, not very happy at all. I just really want this project to be completed and done with, without any additional monies or any additional upgrades that weren't in the original plans. So that's just where I'm at with it.
Any other comments? I don't think I can add anything more to what's already been said. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ratification of amendment number one with signature projects for the construction of the T-117 Public Works Block Wall Project in the amount of $82,683.73.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Item I, discussion approval, disapproval of change order number three with Sunrise Engineering to perform additional environmental work related to the abandonment of the North Wastewater Treatment Plant under CIP SU-98. The total amount for this change order is $119,558.59.
As part of the town's consent decree with ADEQ, this project needs to be completed and the north plant abandoned. A study was performed in general for the alignment and location of that, looking at all the topographical features of the area. An award of contract for specifically the design was awarded to Sunrise, and through coordination, there is a requirement for additional environmental study that is needed. That study is a pass-through cost to the prime engineering company, so the $119,558.59 is the amount that the sub is able to receive for those services. This will allow us to look at, again, any mitigation that is needed and/or possibly just inspections during the construction of what would be generally referred to as the GMP III part or Phase II part of this project.
Council have any questions or requests? Okay, not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve change order number three with Sunrise Engineering to perform additional environmental work related to the abandonment of North Wastewater Treatment Plant, CIP SU-98. The total amount for this change order is $119,558.59.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Item J, discussion approval, disapproval of amendment number one with Water Works Engineers for the design of the chlorine contact chamber under SU-Project SU-112 at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant, bringing the total amount not to exceed $254,252. Chris?
This is another item that is a requirement of ADQ, but at the same time, staff has recognized this project as a need and had planned for prior to ADQ's requirement. The original design of the chlorine contact chamber is too short, and so the length of that chamber, based on a given speed of the water, allows you to have what is called as contact time. So we need to extend that contact time. There are multiple, multiple advantages to this project, including the ability to have now plant water. So reuse will be now able to be done throughout the plant, treated. Reuse water will be able to be utilized throughout the plant. It just will provide a new sampling point, so a permit modification through ADQ will be required, which will be, lead to a better and more representative sample for the operations This will result ultimately in another construction contract through one of our JOC contractors in the near future. Once these plans are completed, they will be sent to one of the JOC contractors priced, and then come back to council to start the construction project. I believe this construction project is required to be completed in the fourth quarter of 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by council? Councilmember Bencina?
I don't have it up here, but is this a budgeted item already?
I believe the chlorine contact chamber was budgeted this year, and if not, it is going to be able to be provided, be able to be paid for through savings in the SU-88 project within the same fiscal year. But I do believe this one was budgeted.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve amendment number one with Water Works Engineers for the design of the chlorine contract chamber SU-112 at the South Wastewater Treatment Plant for the total amount not to exceed $254,252.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item K, discussion approval, disapproval of a CIMAR Construction Services Contract GMP I to Artson Gardner Construction LLC for the project SU-98 North Wastewater Treatment Plant Abandonment Project in the amount of $1,461,108.16. An approval to order the long lead-time items for the project, including lift station pumps, motor control center, electrical equipment, and other appearances for the projects. Chris?
So it's probably worth taking a step back and reminding the process, because we're not so familiar with the CIMAR process as a whole. So this project was advertised, to use the word bids would be slightly incorrect, you cannot bid a CIMAR project in the state law, but qualifications. And so Aiken Gardner was selected for a pre-construction contract, which the council awarded, and so they participate in the design reviews, and they looked at things such as either constructibility, phasing, costs, cost savings. This is the first guaranteed maximum price that will be awarded as part of that same solicitation. It is not an extension of the pre-construction services. It is now a unique thing. Now we're on to construction. One of the common advantages that the CIMAR provides is breaking up the project into multiple, if you will, phases, awards. So some of these items at the time, the So some of these items at the time that we were contemplating, GMP I, were out approximately a year, if I remember correctly. Fifty-plus weeks, sixty-plus weeks, seventy-plus weeks. And we saw the same things with, with well number five. And I'm sure we'll see similar things with well number six in the future. So the first GMP is, as stated, to order these long lead items. And working with the design team, working with the manufacturer of these items, the idea would be to, with a little bit of a safety factor, to order these items right when we believe that construction will be able to commence and not lose a year by ordering them on day one and then saying, well, now we have to wait a year for these items to come in. We would be able to order them at a time where it would be coincidental to when they would be needed for construction. And the contract contemplates that in the language as it relates to the cost, the units, say the words month. And so there's a monthly cost for storage. So we don't want to order them too early, but we also don't want to order them too late and cost violating our consent decree because of the delays. Also, the longer that we wait to order the parts, inflation could creep up. So we could see maybe a seven or eight percent increase in costs by waiting that longer timeframe and actually pay for, pay for the storage fees themselves by cost savings. All that will have to be contemplated. But tonight, it's just the idea of approving GMP I and allowing the flexibility of the design team and the contractor to order the items as appropriately timed as possible.
All right, thank you, Chris. Any council, councilmember Bencina?
I just want to go back, I don't have the request form pulled up. How is the funding on this? Because it's not listed as.
This is a currently budgeted CIP item. I can't really remember if we have five or six million dollars for this first year.
That's all I wanted to know.
It is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
I just think this is a good approach right here. I just wish we could take this, this good approach and then do it on other projects, like walls and stuff like that.
Any other comments, questions? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to CIMAR Construction Services Contract GMP I to Aiken Gardner Construction LLC for the SU-98 North Wastewater Treatment Plant Abandonment Project in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents. An approval to order the long lead type items for the project, including the lift station pumps, motor control center, electrical equipment, and other appurtenances of the project.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Chris. Item fourteen is our second call to the public. Is there anyone in house that wishes to address? Sir, go on and please state your name for the record.
My name is Jim Vannan, and I was not planning to speak tonight. I've been an Arizona resident for nine years. I run six world-class companies as founder, angel investor, or equity partner. I always teach people in my organizations to listen first. After hearing this session, I feel compelled to address two critically important areas. One, budget savings. And two, my personal hot button, communication excellence. It's not a secret that caring public servants and politicians see their careers benefit mostly by saving taxpayer funds and increasing benefits provided. At the governor's State of the Union, I introduced the man sitting next to me, a member of my board of directors, Wally Piper, former president of the Illinois Bankers Association, asking Katie simply that she be receptive to granting him an appointment. His credentials are outstanding, but he is not a sales professional. The topic for discussion is straightforward program funded by the U.S. Congress designed to generate significant FICA insurance savings for states and municipalities. I am prevented, for confidentiality reasons, not to share the exact number, but it's a solid nine-figure savings over the next ten years. The gentleman to be following up with you is Wally Piper from Apache Junction and a member of that Chamber of Commerce. Without my hands-on involvement at the state level, that formal decision and its implementation is lagged. I'm willing to once again nurture the communication and action process, which is why I'm known across the internet as Mr. Call to Action. For clarity, Wally is no longer an active member of my board, but we stay in close contact and he plays an important part in aiding my company just in a less formal capacity. His company is LD Marketing, please be receptive to him reaching out to you. You have my business card and phone number. Also, please remember, when it comes time for reelection, making yourself available to your constituents is the number one proven way to get elected. So keeping and expanding your use of Zoom, absolutely do not kill the goose who lays golden eggs for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Paul, were you done? Come on back up, Paul.
This will be short. So, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and town council members, part two of the State of the Chamber. So I ended with, we're preparing to organize a State of the Town event soon. So I will be getting together with town personnel to organize that. We are planning a premier event for the Dog Bite Murders movie. That movie was filmed partially in Florence here and at the McFarland State Park in the courtroom there. So he showed us a little preview last week, and it's very interesting, and that should be a good event. We are going to plan a tri-city business expo with Coolidge and Eloy. And this will promote businesses in all three communities and bring awareness of Florence businesses to other towns. On another note, we have secured quite a few new members and sponsorships, so that's very encouraging. We've been very active lately in creating and promoting new and current events by improving our presence with more email communications and more social media posts. On that topic, the new website is progressing quickly. My last update was it will be done very soon. We are very excited about this as it will be very interactive. And it will be a one-stop locale for all chamber members, for events, and for community news. Our infrastructure, such as billing, member database, and organization at the chamber is improving daily and progressing nicely. Our invoices are printed, but due to a little minor office supply issue, they were delayed. That has been resolved, so chamber members be on the lookout for chamber dues, invoices. Prices remain the same as last year. So, and conclusion, so far, so good. We are making great strides. We have a lot of events coming up, and things are looking good. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to continuing to improve the greater Florence Chamber of Commerce so that it may serve well the wonderful town of Florence and all who live here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. And we do see what's going on out there and appreciate what you're doing for the community. So, sir?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Les Buckner again. I just want to say I'm really encouraged with respect to long-term planning to see the long-term regional transportation plan being updated. What I would hope, I'm not that familiar with the processes within town staff, but I would imagine that our community development organization would be an integral part in working on that transportation plan, I would think. At least I would certainly hope so because I know they, they have a lot of insights into what's going on with respect to developments that are going to affect our transportation system. Regarding short-term, Hunt Highway. Ms. Bedford, you, you asked about that. I received communication from the county recently, which showed a, an anticipated construction schedule of 2026, 27, for the portion from Magic Ranch up to Copper Basin. I, in looking at our website, the current capital improvement projects shown there for Hunt Highway show a 27, 28 construction. I'm, I, I maybe would guess that maybe it just hasn't been updated. I'm sure that we'll be working in coordination with the county so that we can have it all built at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing any others in house, Ms. Sherry Har is online. Go ahead, Ms. Har.
Good evening, once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. This is another prime example why we need two calls to the public, one is the beginning and one at the end. If my memory serves me correctly, on this well project, it ended up being over two million dollars. That's what I recall that council approved was two million. I live adjacent to Ruggles, between Ruggles and Warner, and, or Ruggles and Warner. And I do like that they have the wall. It's more, you know, aesthetically pleasing. But in saying that, just this one area right here off of Ruggles, I think there's five or six electric gates. Not sure why they needed that many. And if I do recall, also, is the one on Main Street, I don't know if that's well five, but that one on Main Street, that wall was already removed prior to council even approving the dollar amount. And when they asked Mr. Salas, he said it was an emergency. Even though that block wall had been up there for years, all of a sudden it was deemed an emergency. Not sure who deemed it that way, but again, I think that we need to be transparent, and I think council, you guys are wanting that as well. But I think it's ridiculous that you have an individual who can approve these things without going through proper protocol. And I hope that's being handled internally. So that's my two cents on that. But I think two million dollars and now asking for money is ridiculous. Secondly, on the project that they're going to be looking at, I guess on Hunt Highway, I forget what the term they use. Is there a reason why we're not, you know, working with the county and the state to having all these, I forget what he called them, surveys doing or being done? Why aren't we working together? Maybe we could save money, have one survey done versus five and everybody paying this abundant amount of money. What else? I had one other thing, and I apologize that I cannot remember at this time, but again, thank you. Hope you guys keep Zoom on and we're able to speak and you do two calls to the public. Here's a prime example of why we need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Har. Not seeing any one else on here. I would like to address that last comment by Ms. Har. So we are indeed working with the county. So we are well aware of, of that project date being, being moved up. That will be a top priority as we're working through our transportation stuff and, and our budgets. That will be a top priority, that it is our intent to do everything at the same time what they are. The county presently, we have an intergovernmental agreement that they are actually doing our engineering and helping us with the right-of-ways. And so we are absolutely working with the county on this and staying up on it. So I just want to make sure and make that comment. With that, I'm going to close, call to the public, the second call to the public. Item fifteen is call to council, councilmember Neil.
I had a couple of things. Wanted to go back to the Multi-Gen Center. I talked to some people around town, some Florence folks. And honestly, I kicked myself in the butt about it because it was just a, a big bomb of fifty million dollars dropped on everybody, and it scared the crap out of everybody, including me. And I had several people come and ask me, why in the heck didn't we get a fifteen-million-dollar building plans? A twenty-million-dollar building plans, a twenty-five-million-dollar building plans? All we got is a fifty-million-dollar building, and that was that. That's what we presented to public. I just want to say for the future, anything that we do for the future, we look at more angles. And let's not just get one number and take it to everybody and say, that's what you got? No other options. I really think that a lot of backlash that was the fear of the fifty million dollars. I also had some other town people ask me about the lighting on Main Street, wanting the lighting to stay longer. And I had enough people that I figured I would bring it to council and let it be known. I think that as long as it's winter, and we have the winter visitors in town, and it makes this uptown look so nice, why not keep it up longer? My third thing is, yeah, Gopher Talk. The Florence Varsity Cheerleaders won another state championship Saturday. And my daughter would absolutely choke me to death if I didn't tell y'all. She is now a six-time state champion cheerleader. I believe that gives her more than anybody else. Love you, baby girl, you're a beast. Also, boys' basketball doing pretty good, lost a close one to Coolidge. Please get out and support, and the girls' basketball, but the boys, lost to Coolidge. But we get some more support to them, we'll be doing a lot better. God bless, go Gophers.
Thank you. Councilmember Bucelata?
Okay, so I would just wanted to start off by saying kudos to the Chamber of Commerce for working with our neighboring communities and getting together for that tri-city event. That is going to be great, and I'll tell you, it's very much needed. A lot of our neighboring communities have a lot of great things going on, and so do we. And I think if we all share a little bit of that wealth, it could be nothing but positive things coming out of it. So I just wanted to give you guys a big kudo over there, see what you guys are doing, and I like it. The other thing is we have, not the town, but there is an event being put on by Five Two O Events this weekend, and it's, okay, I can't remember the name, and I can't look at my phone, but I think it's Hoppy Days, Hoppy Days. And that's going on over at Padilla Park, and I believe tickets are still available for that if anybody is interested. And I just wanted to say, you know, overall, that we do some things right at times, and sometimes there's things that are done wrong. And I just hope that we learn from those mistakes and we, we learn from them and we don't do them again. So with that being said tonight, that's all I have, and I just wanted to thank everybody and all the staff for all you do. Oh, Carl, I see you cut off your ponytail, I like it. I guess he must have had a successful audit, so you had to cut it or something, I'm just assuming. But I just wanted to say very good job. The two years that I've been up here, it's just amazing to me that not one issue is ever found, and, and I hope we keep it that way for a very long time. So just give your staff an extra kudos tonight because job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. So let me piggyback off what councilmember Bucelata said. Kudos on the, on the audit because I just read on the news how back in northeast, I'm not going to name the state, was kind of dinged for using some COVID money for stuff they weren't supposed to use it. So, good job that we're not that state. Legislators, you guys, and I mean this to the public and everybody, how crucial it is, when you see a legislator, being in touch with your legislator, tell them the importance, tell them what's on your mind. Okay, we just had new legislators come in, just got reelected. Tell them how important Hunt Highway is to you. This helps, okay? Every little bit helps, right? Just like it helps when you guys email us and call in and all this stuff. When you go online, tell them what's on your mind, tell them, hey, look, this is what's going on. You know, I don't think I can wait to 27, 28 to get Hunt Highway done, but is there anything you can do to help us, sir or ma'am? You know, these things do help, whether you realize it or not. In legislation, the governor is trying to work a little bit more with us now in some terms. So with that being said, like I said, there's stuff that can and can't be done because of fiscal requirements or fiscal budgets. But like I said, if you talk to your legislator, these things might come to fluidity. You won't know if you don't try, right? So that's that. Also, congratulations. try, right? So that's that. Also, congratulations, Reggie. Reggie is a pillar of the community. He has been a godsend to many folks, and he is just a plethora of knowledge. And I wish this town had 20 more Reggies. So congrats, Reggie, on your appointment to Board of Appeals. I think you're going to be a great asset to that board. So thank you to all that supported, all the businesses that supported our local not-for-profit veterans organization here in town, American Legion. I appreciate that. We raised a bunch of money to help the National Guard and support them locally. And especially, shout out goes to Semper Fi Heating and Air. They did a phenomenal job in giving us some funds to help with that endeavor. So thank you to that veteran-owned company. They do a lot in the community. And last but not least, congrats to the Station Coffee House. You guys kicked it out, or, you know, you guys blew it away. So I hope we have some more competition for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ben Sina?
I was down on Main Street Friday night, great event. Love seeing my dancers from Merrill Ranch, who just love our dancing on Main Street. Councilman Neal, I had a bunch of people tell me to leave those lights on the light posts, just take the ribbon down and the Christmas deck. So I have, I sent an email to the town manager about that. So hopefully, yeah, we can leave them up or replace them with some nice lighting and take down the garland. I feel it was a little over a week ago, we had that horrible accident. So I just want to say thank you to the firefighters and our police department that had a long night on that one with the tragedy. So appreciate what y'all do. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Bedford?
First, I would like to say thank you, staff, for being phenomenal and doing what you do, not only for us but for our constituents, our residents here in Florence. Secondly, I really cannot wait for February the 10th to come, so we can start putting together some of the projects or events and/or events for our kids. That's my thing, these kids. And thirdly, this weekend, Nicole and I were just talking about it, Heritage Park was packed. The kids enjoyed the new playground, and I was just really blown away by that. I really was. So with that, February 10th, come quick.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adam?
I also want to piggyback on the congratulations to Carl and our finance team. Five audits, and you know, on the agenda, it's a one line, but the work that goes into that and the fact that you continue to excel, that's really tremendous. I'm a liaison to P&amp;Z, so I just wanted to give an update on the work session that we had, which was excellent. It was long, but it was really excellent. And I think of note to our residents, one of the things that we asked for was a regular monthly update on Hunt Highway, Felix, and Addaway. So you should all be expecting to hear from the town department on what's going on in those three roads. And I would expect that at that point, it'd be a resolution that we come together with whatever's going on with the state and the county as well. So we're presenting an updated unified version of that. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I want to thank our new executive director of the chamber. I think you're doing a fabulous job. We love having you here. And we were together at the opening of Clark Bees this weekend, and I want to just give them a shout out. So if any of you like honey, it's fantastic, and they have really unique gifts from Florence. So go check them out. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So by the time it gets to me, a lot of the good stuff is ate up. So I've just got a couple of things. So I believe it was said a number of times, our legislators right now are, they're hammering it out. I mean, they are throwing a lot of stuff through. So our constituents need to really pay an attention. Jeff's not here tonight, but I know that our staff is really paying very, very close attention to what's going on and filling us in as we need it. I don't know the date, but I know that, I know Jeff has been working, the town manager, been working with Eli Crane's office. So Eli Crane's office are going to start holding their office hours. I'm not sure. It was on the website. Is it tomorrow? Okay, it might be tomorrow. So that's going to be a regular happening. They were very, very thankful to come to town and be able to hold these, and they're looking at possibly some other locations within our town. So that's big. This week, so tomorrow, so we, the town Florence, we hold a seat for the Maricopa Association of Governments, the MAGS, for all the mayors in town, Swabe, in Phoenix, with the rest of the mayors for MAG training and that meeting. Last week, Councilmember Bucialato and I were able to present a proclamation to the Florence Unified School District for the School Board Member Month. One thing that we're doing a little bit different is that we're actually taking the proclamations on the road. We're going to the people and giving them the proclamations instead of making them come here, not necessarily to not sit through us, but that we feel that it kind of means more if you take it to them. So that was very nice, and we enjoyed that, and they enjoyed getting that. So with that, that's all I have. At this time, item number 16 is adjourned to an executive session for the purpose of discussions of consult, consultations and designation representatives of body, legal counsel pursuant to ARS Section 38, 431.03A, 4 and A7. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I adjourn.